Okay, whenever you're ready.
All right, I'd like to call to order the December 15, 2002, meeting of the West Palm Beach Planning Board. Madam Clerk, if you please call the roll.
Stephen Mans.
Present.
Todd McLeod.
Here.
Peter Piffco.
Here.
Deborah Rine.
Here.
Andres Peradello. Let the record reflect that Andres Peradello is not present. Mark Pateman.
Here.
Scott Holtz. Let the record reflect that Scott Holtz is not present. John Hicksonbaugh.
Yeah.
All right, the next order of business is approval of the December 17, 2020 minutes. Has everyone had the opportunity to review them? And if so, may I have a motion for approval?
So moves, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion, have we a second?
Second.
Motion and second, any further discussion? All those in favor? I beg your pardon?
I'm sorry, I was not in attendance at the last meeting. So I would not be able to vote on the minutes.
All right, I'm not sure that's definitely right, but don't worry about it, I think we'll have enough votes to pass.
Okay.
Anyway.
I have a question.
Oh, go ahead, Deborah.
It shows that I was disconnected from the meeting, I had some technical difficulty. Does it need to show that I was reconnected?
Yeah, why don't we note that, that you were reconnected? Ms. White, if you could add that. We thought you wouldn't come back, but I lost my bet and you did. All right, so for the movement, Mr. Piffco, do you accept the amendment?
Sure.
And the second, Mr. McLeod?
Yes.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor, see to five by saying aye, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, it passes unanimously. All right, next on our agenda is a report of the planning staff.
Good evening, planning board. Planning is on administrative Angela Van. Let me see, I'll show my screen. There it is. Can you see my screen?
Yeah.
You sure can.
Good, Angela.
There's some progress, learn how to do this. All right.
Talk to John Roach.
(laughing).
You'll get his marking spot after all.
(laughing). This is a quick update of the cases that have been approved by the City Commission since the last planning board meeting. This will approve at City Commission meeting on November 30th. And planning board heard these cases on July, this one case on July 21st. And approved about seven to zero vote. This is the Palm Beach Riverstone, if you're familiar with the property, it's based...
I'm sorry, Angela, you kind of froze on us. Is everyone having the same difficulty I am?
Yes, yeah, she's still frozen.
Okay. Well, she'll come back and say, and that concludes my report.
Do you want me to speak through the slides, Angela?
Yeah, if you don't mind, that might be helpful.
But this is the Palm Beach Riverstone Development, if you remember, at the corner of 45th Street and I-95. This included a Wawa on the corner, 150-room hotel behind the Wawa and a 374-unit multifamily development behind that. We transmitted to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity. They had no objections and this was unanimously approved by the City Commission.
Okay.
There were others, but it looks like we lost Angela altogether, so I don't see the other slides that she had.
Okay, well, why don't we come back to that at the end of the meeting, should they wish to do so? All right, then next on the agenda are remarks by the chairperson, and I do have some remarks this evening, because I take great pleasure in introducing to you John Hicksonbaugh, the first alternate for our planning board. Mr. Hicksonbaugh is a section manager right-of-way for the South Florida Water Management District. He has over 30 years of government and government affairs experience, and is the past Development Services Director of the City of Boca Raton, zoning official at St. Petersburg, Florida, and planning and development director at the City of Port Orange. He has an undergraduate degree from the University of Florida, a master's degree in urban and regional planning from the University of Florida, and a law degree from Stetson University. Mr. Hicksonbaugh is an AICP certified urban planner and a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners. As the first alternate to this board, he will participate fully in all of our hearings and discussions. When a member is absent, as tonight, he will also vote. We thank you for your community service, John, and welcome you to our board.
Thanks very much.
That then brings us to the Declaration of Ex parte Communications. Does anyone have anything to disclose? And if not, next on our agenda are continued cases, of which there are none. And that then brings us to Planning Board Case Number 791II.
Mr. Chair, while they're setting up, are you reading the script tonight?
I was hoping you might. So now would be the appropriate time to do so.
Pursuant to Mary Keith A. James's Executive Order Number 2020-05 issued on April 2nd, 2020, the City of West Palm Beach's boards and committees are conducting meetings through media technology and have released the requirements to have a quorum of its members physically present at City Hall. On April 14, 2020, Mary Keith A. James issued Executive Order Number 2020-09, which specifically provides the rules and procedure for conducting city meetings, including requirements for quasi-judicial hearings. To ensure the ability for the public to continue to participate in this hearing, it is being streamed live and available for viewing in the City Commission chambers located at City Center 401 Clemata Street, on the condition that social distancing be practiced. Additionally, for those wishing to access the meeting remotely, they are able to do so directly through the applicable Zoom webinar link, as well as the city's usual media channels, including WPB TV 18, the city's website, and the city's YouTube, Facebook, and Twitter feeds. Anyone from the public who would like to provide comment on an agenda item is able to do so through the following. Number one, in the city center Flagler Gallery. Number two, dialing 561-320-6451, and leaving a voicemail not to exceed three minutes. Three, sending an email or video recording to pbpubliccomment@wpb.org. Or four, completing the online public comment form at www.wpb.org-publiccomments. Those accessing the meeting directly through Zoom may also use the Q and A or raise hand features. Anyone accessing the Zoom audio using their phone may raise their hand by pressing star nine. Regardless of method, please be sure to indicate the agenda number or case number for which you are providing comment. Everyone providing testimony must have video capability and will need to be sworn in. The swearing in will occur at the start of each case on the agenda. If you're about to provide testimony or not sworn in, please be sure to indicate such and be sworn before offering your testimony. After the applicant presents their case, staff will provide a presentation, and then the public will have an opportunity to speak or have their comments read into the record from previously received correspondence. The board will then go into executive session. Prior to rendering a decision, the board will confirm no additional public comments have been received by staff. And finally, for the members of the board, it is emphasized that Florida sunshine laws are applicable and you may not use the chat feature or any other form of individual communication to discuss matters with other board members, the applicant, or the general public during the meeting.
Thank you so much, Hope. All right, everyone who plans to speak or offer testimony this evening, would you please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give to this board will be truthful?
I do.
All right, thank you. Let us hear from the applicant. Is that Mr. Schmidt?
Yes, sir. Thank you, I'm assuming everybody can see my screen and hear me?
They can.
Great. Item number one tonight is 1885 Center Park Development. On the call with me tonight, also have the developer Frank Navarro, our architect from MSA, and our civil and traffic engineer. So if you have any questions, our team is here to answer them. This is a major planned development amendment within Center Park. And let's see if I can advance the screen here. It is lot, it says for Lot 4S here. It's located at the corner of Center Park Boulevard and Center Park Drive. When we talk about parking and some of the things that are going to be coming up, the city looks at this as one overall project. And we'll go into what we're proposing for this 2.2 acres. Just a little bit of history about Center Park. It was originally put together in 1985 from Mr. Navarro. It went through considerable amendments as it's went through the history back there. And you've seen a project in the past, it's really kind of the left-door parcels are really kind of becoming a residential area close to the downtown. But its current approval that it has is 572,000 square feet of office, 225,000 square feet of hotel rooms with 382 rooms, 20,000 square feet of commercial, 570 residential units. Parcel B located in this corner that just went through last year called 1500 Center Park was 246 units that's currently under construction. If you've been by, we're proposing on what we call Parcel A in the master plan, 233 units. That leaves 91 left within there. There is some square footage to be converted. But we've submitted an application for an Option A and an Option B. Option B be a little bit more intensive in terms of residential units, and I'll show you where those are. It's 133 square, 133 units and just about 2,000 square feet of retail. In the alternate, we were taking out seven units and doing about 7,000 square feet of office. And I'll show you where that is. And we are subject to a previous resolution from the city, Resolution 9817, which required 20% of our units to be workforce housing. This is just an overall zoomed-out aerial. This was the 1500 Center Park that went through your process last year. We asked for some waivers from parking. This is our current location here, the 233 residential units on Lot 4S. And this is Lot 4N, which is an existing office building. We'll zoom in on the site. This is the site plan, which is a seven-story residential tower with a parking garage and our amenity deck located on the parking garage, our main access from Center Park Boulevard. And some of the waivers that we're asking for today are really, you know, have to do with some landscape buffers along the streetscape. And we've been working very hard with planning staff, as well as planning zoning staff, as well as engineering, to get the look that they want, which is more of an urban look. And some of the waivers that we're requesting are just stemming from that. When we look at the site plan, the Option A, the 266 units, 45 of those being workforce, we had 7,000 square feet of office, 2,000 square feet of retail, you know, the garage and the garage. And Option B, this area at the corner of Center Park Boulevard and Center Park Drive is where we would be either having the office component or the residential component. So in this corner, we wanted the option, both are permitted by right, to provide either the office component or the additional seven units, just depending on the market and where it ends up as we go to construction documents and building this out. We are also providing parking within our garage, 399 spaces. We worked with staff to get that on-street parking, again, that urban feel for located along Center Park Boulevard, 144 within the adjacent lot, and so we're providing 547. And that's considerably over our peak parking requirement of 441. This is just some shots of what we feel this interior, this interior space is either going to be, you know, coming from a residential component or an office component tucked in here. So these are just some imagery and how this is going to be built out within there. And also, when you're on an upper level, looking down into that courtyard. So the architect is doing a really great job. This is the elevation that was up before, this is from the corner. And the area that we're talking about in conversion is kind of this, this area here located the corner. It'll either be the seven units that have direct access out onto the street, or we will have the office component there. These are the elevations, of course, you know, the south elevation, that's facing Center Park Boulevard. This east elevation is Center Park Drive. Again, those areas that would be potentially switching out between office and residential, those are the two areas that we're providing, you know, activity and action on the street, eyes on the street and activity. These are the other two elevations, the north elevation and the south elevation. Here's some more kind of accentometric views from the top one, from the existing parking lot that you'd be looking at, our parking garage, and then some from the lake view. Again, major planned development today, the Option A and Option B. But we are seeking five waivers that I'll go into a little bit more detail. The waivers are the one shade tree for multifamily unit. You know, in our worst-case scenario, we need 233 of them. So we're asking you for a waiver from that, but we feel that we can take care of mitigation. A 10-foot landscape buffer along the right-of-way for multifamily. Again, that's where our urban section's going to be. A five-foot landscape buffer between parcel lines, so they're wanting us to do a five-foot buffer between us and the lake. You know, we're doing quite a bit of additional lotoral planting and green space. And then the last two really kind of go together, the maximum building coverage of 2% or 2,000 square feet, and then, you know, the minimum open space. So they offset one another, but I have to ask for a waiver for both of them. We feel that they're very minor and really have to do with architectural embellishments and pulling that building up to the street. Waiver number one is, I'm sorry, that's just off the screen here. The 233 trees that would be required, we're providing 115 trees. That's not only on our site, but the developer has hired us on the, I guess, in another task is to go out and find major and minor green spaces that happen all throughout the Center Park master plan. And as this starts to convert, and we have residential, you know, people walking through here, we're going to be providing in this project additional pathways, gazebos, activity to lakes. And we've identified other areas that we can mitigate those trees. So right now, they're located just along the lakefront and some of the entries. But I think as it goes along, our option and the condition of approval is to provide them on-site and/or do a cash out. And I know the developer would like to better the overall Center Park, and we'll be looking to put as many on-site as we can. The second waiver request is the standard 10-foot buffer that you would see along Okeechobee Boulevard, which is just 10-foot of landscaping. Been working very diligently with staff where we want, you know, activity along the street. We want hardened sidewalks, we want tree grates, you know, in section here. We're still going to have all the landscaping that would typically be there, but it's, but, you know, in the standard buffer, it all has to be green space. So again, we've got sidewalks, crossings, specialty pavers, benches, trash cans, and stuff to get this, you know, as an active streetscape. Again, staff supporting that. The third one is the buffer between the lake. I mean, the code just requires that you provide a five-foot buffer between the, you know, between the property lines. We're actually expanding this lake, the current lake edge is right here. We're expanding that lake edge, doing all kind of lotoral planting, additional lotoral planting along here. And part of the, part of our agreement, you know, to better this is, you know, a gazebo out here activating the lakefront and actually providing pathways and landscaping enhancements off-property that really, you know, add to the pedestrian experience and the residential experience. And again, the last, the last two really kind of go in hand-in-hand. The 2% building coverage and the minimum open space, these, it's 2,000 square feet, it's pretty minimal. The architectural embellishments that staff has assessed, and we work diligently with, the quality of our architecture and design, the mitigating of all the pathways that are not required by code, but are going to make the overall project, you know, very, a very high-quality project that I think the city, you know, will be very proud of and work well, really well close to the downtown, you know, and provide the much-needed workforce housing. Again, Mr. Navarro's had us look at, you know, where we can provide this additional green space and embellishments, and I think you'll see a majority of those trees get put in within the master plan. We're rounding home now. Standards for code compliance, we're compliant with 9432 standards A through H, Section 9435C, standards 1 through 13. We have stack recommendation of approval with conditions. We're in agreement with all six conditions. And this project will, you know, fulfill the needs of the city, providing much-needed workforce housing in the urban marketplace. The project has been designed to further create quality environment that encourage walkability. Community gathering opportunities will promote transition of this development to urban campus for quality residential housing and corporate offices. Our team's available here to answer any questions that you might have. Later in the day, we did get a note from the adjacent property owner with some concerns. We've tried to address those as quickly as we can. I'm not sure that we've addressed all their concerns, but I know how important it is for this board. We reach out to neighbors and, you know, we've done that since the onset. So again, we're happy to clarify anything that is needed tonight and seek your approval and your support. So that's all I have for you.
All right, thank you. Any questions of the applicant by this board?
Okay, we'll get John, get John.
I have a question. I mean, I support the waivers to promote a more urban character. And as a board member, I'm always going to come at it, really, I'm a big dog walker, I'm a huge walker. And these complexes tend to have lots of dogs in them. And I just wanted for you to maybe tell me, are there, is there pedestrian-level lighting along these walkways? Ballards, dog cleanup stations? Those are the sorts of streetscape improvements that I would expect to see in an urban type of setting?
Yes, absolutely, you're going to see ballards out here, this has to be lit very well. You might also see them in the side retaining walls along the steps and pathways going up here. And that's a good, you know, a good point to add, the dog walking stations along these walkways. You know, we're in the downtown and it can be problematic, so I think that's a good suggestion. And I'm sure we're happy to install those.
And would there, will there be any lighting on the walking path around the lake? I just see that really being heavily used a lot. And I just think for the residents in this area, that would be important. I don't know if that's something that's in the plan.
Well, what I, what we can commit to, certainly those spaces within our property lines. Once we get out of our property line, then we're really in association property. So it really takes the efforts of everybody on that, you know, that POA board, you know, as we move it forward, to commit to that. So certainly, we can commit to it within ours, but in the overall master plan, you know, I'll certainly let them know and bring it up, unless Frank, you have additional, you know, unless you have a comment other than that.
Your mute's on. Mr. Navarro, your mute is on, we cannot hear you. There you go.
Sorry about that. Yeah, Frank Navarro here, been involved with the park since 1994. And I just want to clarify, John probably is used to dealing with a lot of boards that are differently structured. But this is a commercial plan POA, and as such, it's declarant controlled. So we are declarant and we can affect, you know, the outcome of that walkway. We don't really have a board to rely on. The only thing I would say is that we did ask John, I'm super excited about what he came up with in terms of the improvements that we might, that we might execute over the years. We obviously are going to do things in a process. So, you know, this, this first piece for 1885 tees up nicely to work with this pond and this area that you see highlighted here. And yes, I think that we would want to make that lighted because of safety and concerns, but also just to make it useful. And, but eventually, there'll be a lot of other improvements that John has kind of helped us brainstorm that would be implemented. But I just want to clarify, we are a declarant-controlled board, I mean, POA.
Well, I appreciate that, and I would just, I would leave, obviously defer the details of that to staff, but I do think that the pedestrian-level lighting for the residents is an important feature that's appropriate when we're considering waivers that are based in creating an urban streetscape project. Thanks very much.
Understood.
Peter, you had a question?
I had a question. First of all, I wanted to compliment Mr. Navarro for allowing the architects to come up with something innovative or a change. I think it will benefit the city tremendously, the design that you're proposing. I do have a question about, you know, just a concern that I think you should just review with your architects, and that's the number of elevators. You're only showing one elevator to provide service for, you know, the entire 200-something units. I think that's going to be deficient. The other question I had, could you refresh your memory about micromobility and what exactly it means?
Well, I can answer the elevator question. I think we have at least three elevators, so I'm not sure. Maybe there's been some miscommunication in our submittal, but I think the most current, we're 100% finished with our schematic design package, and we spent a lot of time talking about elevators, I share your concern. We did work with your transportation engineering folks about micromobility, and we have. John, you might want to point it out in the site plan, but we have a designated area, I think along the southwest corner of our project where such a station could be easily added in the future, which was the provision that we were asked to accommodate.
Over in, over in the garage, Frank?
No, it's not, it's, look at your green, no, not there, on the other end. Now, yeah, right there. It's, I'm not sure it's showing in that particular plan you selected, but that's where it goes.
And Peter, I can clarify about that.
Yeah, yeah, John.
The intent of the micromobility was, and for the record, John Roach, Principal Planner for the city. So the micromobility station, the intent was, and the requirement is, is that they provide a space that could ultimately be a part of the city's larger micromobility program. And what that is, is that's like bike share, scooter share, all those types of facilities where it's a, it's a network of stations that people can go from one place to the other utilizing, you know, that system. Right now, we don't have that system in place officially. We did have a bike share for a period of time downtown. But we are in the process of moving forward with a broader program that would include the scooters and so forth. So we feel like the developer can use that space for their own program, you know, private resident bikes, rental bikes and so forth, but at which time the city, you know, identifies the program and identifies this as a location for a station, then they need to make that available to us.
But for these stations, are there going to be any services for the bikers, like air pumps? Or, you know, in case you have a flat, you know where to go to fix it?
Sometimes that is a part of those, yeah. And as far as a micromobility program where it's a part of a network, a paid network, those are actually maintained by the company that runs the program. You know, you're talking more of like a private citizen using their own bike, bicycle and so forth. You know, we can certainly work with the developer to include those in there, but maintenance and upkeep of whatever, whether it be a scooter or a bicycle, would be up to the operator of the program.
Thanks.
All right, any other questions of the applicant? And if not, let's hear from staff, Mr. Roach.
So, you know, John Roach, Principal Planner, really don't have anything to add. I feel like the applicant did a really great job covering the request and so forth, so I won't go into any additional information there. You know, we feel like that they've more than justified all the waivers that they're requesting. This is furthering the goal and the vision that we've explained almost two years to the day when the 1500 Center Park project came before you. We really feel like that vision's coming to fruition, creating more of a mixed-use urban environment for Center Park, which was built out as a suburban office complex, but, you know, it's being reinvented as something a little more exciting. So we feel like this project is carrying forward that vision. We feel like it meets all the required amendment standards, subject to the conditions within staff's report, as mentioned by the applicant. As mentioned by the applicant, we did receive a letter from the adjacent property owner. It was about an hour before the meeting started. We haven't had a chance to fully go through that and figure out whether those concerns or proposed conditions should be incorporated in the staff's recommendations. But we will certainly do that before we go to commission. A lot of it revolves around parking and the fact that these two properties adjacent to each other have a shared parking agreement. You know, the details of that agreement, you know, kind of differ from one party to the next in terms of, you know, what they feel like they're obligated to. But from a code perspective, it's our opinion, using shared parking, which is an ideal circumstance here, where you have office and residential, which have opposite peak times. That it's, it's a great opportunity to reduce the amount of parking and utilize each other's property to meet that need. So again, we feel like it meets all of the requirements of the amendment standards and happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right. Any questions of Mr. Roach? And if not, Mr. Roach, does anyone from the public wish to be heard on this to be known?
So I do have one gentleman who is online who wishes to speak, John Metzger, who represents the adjacent property to the north. I will bring him into the meeting in just one second. Okay, John, you should be in. You'll just need to turn on video and unmute.
Unmute. And Mr. Metzger, let me swear you in if I might. Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be truthful?
I do.
All right, please proceed.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. The concerns of my client are really the adverse impacts that the change in the existing development plan are going to have on our property. Our property is an existing office complex. And as Mr. Roach mentioned, there is a shared cross-parking, cross utility, cross-access easement. So this site was originally considered as a single parcel. And for purposes of the development of the adjacent property that's before you tonight, it must be looked at in that context as the developer is relying upon the shared parking, for instance, and justifying meeting the standards and so forth. And the main concern, one of the main concerns is that the new development plan seeks to basically cut in half the existing traffic roundabout that is partially on my client's property, partially on the developer's property. It's not shown on the site plan. I'm not sure why that was presented to you tonight. But if you pull it up, it's actually showing that it will not exist. So one of the points of clarification and conditions of approval is that we would like that addressed and addressed how the developer is going to remove that now severed traffic circle. It was originally, the site was designed, there would be two office buildings facing each other and would use that traffic circle as a drop-off area, is my understanding. But now that's being changed and it's negatively impacting the existing office building. So we'd like a condition of approval to remediate that. The other issue involves that now instead of having an office building facing our existing office building with a common drop-off area, we will have the rear end of a garage building right up against our property line. So we would like to address some additional buffering along there. I understand that the site is already maxed out in terms of the trees on site, partly because of the waivers that are being sought to have more lot coverage and less trees. We would like some more buffering. We're happy to discuss whether that can be put on Lot Four South or whether we need to have an area on Lot Four North to have some additional buffering. But that's an issue we'd like to have addressed as well in a condition of approval. The other comments and concerns relate to the shared access and shared parking. We would like to have shown on the approved site plan that all construction must go through a separate entrance from the shared entrance. We do not want to interfere with our shared access rights. So we'd like to have all the construction traffic going through a separate entrance on Lot Four South. And then lastly, a clarification in terms of how the staff and the developer are interpreting the shared parking rights. I've read it a number of times. It is a very brief, somewhat ambiguous document. And my understanding, and hopefully they will clarify this on the record, is in terms of applying the city code for the shared parking that they are looking at all of the spaces being shared. And there is a provision in the agreement, the First Amendment to that agreement, which says that the property owners cannot assign or designate parking spaces on one lot for the use of solely occupants of the other lot. My understanding from speaking with the developer is that the intention of that was to say that you can't have reserved parking spaces other than with respect to excess spaces that are in excess of the minimum required by code on each lot. It does not say that. I'd like to have it clarified for the record that that is how the city's applying it and that is the intent.
May I address?
Yes, you may. But before I give you that opportunity, John, was there anyone else from the public who wishes to be heard?
No one else has identified their wish, their desire to speak, no.
Okay. Ms. Navarro, if you want to respond to some of the concerns.
Yeah, I'd be happy to respond to each of those points. In fact, we were on the phone earlier today with Mr. Metzger. Despite the fact that I've been talking with his owner since January and then again, tried to engage him in September. And even two months ago, when we finalized this plan, we got absolutely no response from them other than we're busy or, you know, we'll get back to you or send me the drawings, which I had already sent them. So I find it kind of interesting that we ended up getting this whole fire drill here the last hour. Might have something to do with the fact that we changed our site plan so we would need no consent. And we, we originally had some minor changes to their side, which I think would have been maybe even better for both sides. But since we got no relief or no engagement, we just kind of decided that we couldn't wait no longer. So with regard to the circle, I would turn that around and say that the neighbor to the north has used our land for twenty-three years for the circle. We've gotten paid nothing for that. And we can't encumber our property with a circle or half a circle when in fact, you know, the market is craving workforce housing and the new configuration of our project is requiring this kind of layout to make the delivery of affordable or more, more attainably priced housing possible. So we did tell Mr. Metzger this afternoon that we'll be happy to, to put him in touch with our contractor. We don't want to be, we don't want to go change their site plan for them. They should do that. I know they have a lender that has five of these people's property all on one loan. And, you know, I know that that's very cumbersome. Mr. Pateman, you know, being the leasing agent for the property in the north, that it's a complicated deal. So we just want to do our project, certainly would cooperate in making introductions so that that half circle can be resolved in something that works for both sides. As far as the trees, we told them we got more trees and we got places to put them. We'd be happy to add more buffers and do whatever we have to do to help them out. And but again, you know, we're trying to avoid a rabbit hole of agreements and conditions that require us to actually go down the path with this owner and its lender. Because the record that they've kind of achieved since January has been, you know, less than desirable for somebody that's trying to get a development off the ground. So hopefully you guys understand that. As far as the construction, I asked Mr. Metzger, first of all, I want to point out that, that his Lot Four North has an entrance to the north, to Center Park Drive North, and also has the main entrance for, on which we have the right to come and go right there where the cursor is pointing. And so, you know, we feel like we, we may find that it's easier to create our own entrance for construction for a period of time, but not necessarily, you know, commit to forever. And, you know, the truth is that Lot Four North has had a ton of construction activity go through that very entrance. So why should we be penalized just because we come next? Now, we don't know exactly. It's very early in the process. And, you know, we're happy to, we're happy to look at the best and least impactful way to build this project. I think my track record in the city would so demonstrate that. But, you know, I find it curious that an hour before this meeting, I get this letter. And now we're to, you know, to address concerns or commit ourselves to limit what we can do on our own property in a way that might cost us money or make the project less than feasible. And lastly, the parking easement speaks for itself. The owner of the north bought this property with that parking easement recorded. That parking easement was recorded in nineteen ninety-nine and a couple of times thereafter, it was amended, mostly because there were interests on north, for example, a lender or when we sold that property in two thousand and six, who wanted to make sure that if there was a surplus parking space on the north, that it would not be reserved. And what I mean by surplus, I mean, you cannot reserve code required parking. We know that. Everybody knows that. But, you know, let's say like on his property, he's got these little covered tents over, you know, reserved parking. There's no problem. He's got plenty of them that he can reserve. And that's what the intent was, that I can't, as the declarant of this parking easement, go in and benefit myself by reserving something from the north to benefit the south. But the whole nature of the parking easement is that all the code required parking, both on our property and his, have to stay open. And their people are going to have just as great an opportunity to park in our three hundred and some spaces that we have to keep open in our garage than we do to park on their side. Having been an owner for a long time, I can tell you what's going to happen. People like to park near a front door. And my residents are not going to be interested in parking in that surface lot and walking all the way back to the garage. The whole reason the garage is set up for seven levels is so you can park on your own level and enter a secure, you know, door to your unit. So those are the concerns I heard. I, I did tell Mr. Metzger that while we're not prepared to encumber ourselves unnecessarily with more agreements and so forth, that I think that he and his client are going to be very pleased with the way we run this project. And there's nothing in my track record which suggests otherwise. And we're ready to go. And it's a great project. We are excited about the transformation in what we're going to be calling Center Park Village. And we hope that you can support it.
All right. Are there any questions of the applicant or of staff from the board?
Mr. Chair, is there any time for me to respond?
I'm, I'm going to say no, Mr. Metzger, because you were given an opportunity to comment. I, I will encourage the parties to continue their negotiations and discussions. That we, we're just a recommending board. There's still time before it comes up to the city commissioner for a final vote. But for, for matters that were raised so close to our hearing and to take further time as the discussions go back and forth, I don't think is appropriate. So we're going to bring it back to the board for, for our consideration. And I first asked the board if there's any questions, and I heard none. If that's correct, then we need to discuss it among ourselves. First, does anyone have any concerns about this project? And if so, let's discuss.
Let me just, we just start just real quickly. So I didn't believe there were going to be any issues with this project whatsoever. But because Mr. Navarro raised the issue of the company that I work for having a listing agreement, an engagement with the property owner to the north and a certain amount of buildings within Center Park on the office sector. While I'm no longer involved in the day-to-day operation or involved in that in a meaningful way, it can be completely impartial just to preserve the integrity of the board and to make sure there's no perception of impropriety. I'll recuse myself from this vote if we have enough votes to move forward without me.
All right. Will be so noted. And then we'll continue our discussions. And does anyone else have any concern about this project that we should be discussing? And I've got to look for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move approval of the case number seven nine one I I, which includes six conditions and four waivers.
All right, we have a motion. Have we a second? We have a motion and we have a second. Any further discussion?
Five waivers.
I, I think, Mr. Pifko, how many did you say?
I said four. That's what's on the report, but I could be wrong.
Mr. Roach, what's the correct number? Five?
The last one is numbered four and five. So, yeah, there's five total.
Five, all right. So you amend your motion, Mr. Pifko?
Yeah, we'll make it five.
You accept the amendment?
Absolutely.
Okay, so we have an amended motion and second. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Mr. Navarro, if I could say before you go, we, the board, would, you know, typically encourage those ongoing discussions you have with your neighbor. It sounds like you made a good faith effort to reach out on a timely basis. So we respect that, but we would still encourage those discussions. It sounds like some of those matters might be able to be worked out.
Yeah, and I'm happy to do that. I just don't want to relitigate agreements that are already in place to our.
Understand. I understand.
I think we felt a little bit kind of put over a barrel here with regard to this approval and the one that's coming behind it. And we want to negotiate and be accommodating from an equal standing, not.
Understand. And we also, in, in those discussions where it's before us still, we, we want some staff input as well. So it's very hard to do one of these circumstances. And we just encourage you to continue your good faith discussions.
Steve, Steve has eight hours of mediation.
Just a day alone. So thank you. I think that's the end of that hearing. And then at this point, we will then call up case number one eight, one three F.
Let me bring in the people for the second case. Just give me one second. And that should be everybody.
Okay, thank you. Would everyone who plans to speak or offer testimony this evening, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be truthful?
Yes.
I do.
All right, thank you. All right, can we hear from the applicant? I believe that's Mr. Sicklin. Your mute's on. We'd like to hear from you. Harder to do, muted.
Alan, I'll go ahead and start if you, unless you want to make a few opening remarks at the beginning.
Your mute's on, Alan.
Sorry.
This guy.
No, George, you go ahead, George.
All right.
Okay. I'm going to start my screen. Oh, I need to share it, don't I? Hold on. You'll give me one minute?
I'd like your background.
That's the Jupiter inlet. I happen to be chairman of the commission that runs that inlet, so. Anyway, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, thank you so much for having us here tonight. And thank you all for putting in your time tonight and, and doing this on a Zoom meeting, which is hopefully we'll stay connected. I'm in Jupiter Farms right now, making it from my house. And we have power outages constantly out here, so hopefully I'll still be able to stay on. We're here tonight. I have with me Pat Lantini, who's one of my senior planners. And of course, you, you saw Alan Sicklin, who is our legal counsel on the project and my, my co-applicant. And I think we have our engineers here from Simmons and White. And we're all here to answer any of your questions. The first thing I want to do is thank the staff, Rick, Linda, Angela, everybody from the staff has been tremendous working with us. This has been a long process and I'll go through the history very briefly. And I will make this as brief as possible because I know that everybody, I did an eight-hour mediation and I'm not a lawyer. And that was in front of a, a judge for a project, a legal, a expert witness. And it was gru, it was, it was tough. So anyway. The project is located on the corner of Military Trail and Forty-Fifth Street. And it's right at the edge of the city in this location. Riviera Beach actually has adjacent parcels to this parcel. And it's in a area that had been depressed pretty extensively. This was an industrial site and I'll go over some of the changes that we did. But as you can see from the map, this area is a mixture of commercial. The shopping center across the street, there's a Bobcat dealer to the north of us and then an RV sales and storage facility that's even farther north and commercial that's on the intersection throughout that entire area. and commercial that's on the intersection, uh, throughout that entire area. Um, it, the time has been, uh, made right because of the Fit Team Stadium that was developed, uh, just to the south of the, of the shopping center here on, um, on Military Trail. Um, and our, uh, property owner who's had the property for quite some time, uh, felt now is the time to go ahead and move forward. And of course, we moved forward pre, uh, pandemic. And, um, uh, we're going to go over s- where we are now with the project. Um, so anyway, these are just some of the areas that are around it. I did go over them already, uh, Southwind Commercial Plaza to the south. Um, our request tonight is for a, um, rezoning to, uh, from G C, uh, general commercial to a commercial plan development with a master plan for the overall site. Um, we are doing that master plan now so that we can have a coordinated project. Um, we have one tenant at the current time, which you'll see and you all know, it's the, uh, next item, which is the site plan for the Wawa lease parcel. And Wawa is our, uh, single tenant that we have right now on the site. We had a lot of people looking at it. But in the retail end and commercial end, people have been somewhat reluctant to go forward with items. And we hope that that will come back as we get out of this, uh, twenty twenty year that has been pretty stressful. We have only two waivers and they're very minor. Uh, one is from section ninety-four, four oh eight, uh, which includes the, um, uh, uh, the, uh, I did in reverse, the gas price, uh, directional sign, and we'll go over that in a minute. Uh, we're looking at a waiver of, uh, a setback waiver. And I'll go through the justification. And we're also looking for a waiver to the access to streets. This property had, uh, four access points on, uh, Forty-Fifth Street. Um, and, uh, had a gas station, a very dilapidated gas station with two pump islands, but totally open to the Military Trail. Uh, I couldn't tell you how many driveways I could have fit in there. And then there was, uh, further driveway up to the north a little bit. So we're asking for the ability to do two, three driveways, um, uh, on the, on the project site. And we'll go over that in a, in a minute. Oops. And I'm having, oh, there we go. So, uh, just for everybody's, and I'm going to go through this briefly. Um, we brought in a number of applications over the last year and a half to bring this from an industrial site with a, uh, a mixed, uh, land use. We actually annexed in a parcel, uh, as well from Palm Beach County and brought it into the project site and changed the, uh, conference plan from industrial I to commercial C on five, five point two acres. And then rezoned from industrial I to general commercial, um, for the existing cell tower site. And this has a cell tower site that's been on for a number of years and has a lease that probably will go beyond my lifetime and Alan's as well. Um, rezoning from industrial plan development, which it was at that point, a portion of the property to, um, from, from that to industrial and then from industrial to general commercial. So today we have a general commercial piece of property with a, with a, um, land use matching that. This is the existing zoning district. It's a general commercial site. That's the entire parcel. Um, you can see the boundary line, the, the black line shows the, the change in, um, uh, Riviera Beach to the north. That is the RV, uh, storage and sales facility. And the little gray area in the, in the middle on the north is the Bobcat dealership. And, uh, they have equipment storage on that site. We are going to go and take this site, uh, of course, to a rezoning for a commercial plan development zoning district. Um, this is our overall master plan. I wanted to give it to you in context of, uh, of the, um, overall area, just so that you can see. Uh, the one tenant and the one parcel that we are going to talk about tonight is the Wawa site plan, which is at the corner, uh, which is taking the place of a portion of the property that had a gas station and convenience store previous. And then we've expanded it so that we had a, an appropriate location for them. And then the remainder of it, um, is, uh, part of the commercial development. You can see, uh, and I'll show you that on this location. Um, this is the FPNL, uh, transmission lines, which is a part of the project. We're using it for a retention area, but it's, uh, also an area that we really can't develop because of the overhead transmission lines for FPNL. This is the old existing cell tower, uh, which is there to remain. Uh, we can't really do anything with it. It's, as I said, has a long, long-term lease that has already been paid for. And, uh, we are working out, lessening their, their footprint of their site in the area. But the, the cell tower will remain. And we've done, I think, a fairly good job of, of cleaning it up and, and dealing with it, um, as far as its buffer. Uh, this is the Wawa convenience store. It's about fifty-six hundred thirty-six square feet with a gas station island with six pumps that is, um, uh, facing Military Trail. Um, we have two proposed fast food restaurants and we have no tenants and no, uh, people with this is, uh, or no users for this right now. But we have been working, we've had interest. Uh, and again, as I said, the pandemic and, uh, economic issues have kind of held up on a lot of the restaurant developments. But we're hoping that it will crank up again here soon. Uh, we're looking at a general commercial of about thirty thousand nine hundred square feet, which will be located mainly in the parcel to the north of that main access drive and a portion of it on the portion against, um, uh, Forty-Fifth Street. And then we look at a high turnover restaurant site of about five thousand square feet. And all these uses have been, there were interest in it because of the Fit Team Stadium. Um, and, uh, we think that this project is, uh, greatly bringing an improvement to this entire area and will be an asset, uh, to, to the city. This is the Wawa site plan. Uh, I went over the square footages. Um, we've, uh, we've been working with staff and working on a lot of the items on here. And we'll be talking about it, one of the conditions of approval that we finally worked out, uh, which I think is a great solution. Um, and you have, I think, your staff here to talk about it. But, um, just very briefly, two of the access points coming in, one off of Military and one off of Forty-Fifth Street will be right turn in, right turn out only. So we have no access to gain, uh, additional access for the full, uh, roadway sections. We will have it and I'll show you that in the master plan. Um, this is sixteen pump island, the convenience store. We have parking that's associated here. There's also parking, uh, that I'll show you up on the north side of the Wawa building. Uh, and we have outdoor, uh, seating and dining, uh, for this area for when people come in and, uh, buy food and want to sit there and visit. This is the gas sign pricing. This is one of our waivers that we've asked for. Um, and this has to do with, uh, the setback. We felt it was, uh, we have provided the county with an extensive amount of right-of-way dedication in this area to expand the intersection of Forty-Fifth Street and Military Trail. Um, and we wanted to have this sign, a one-time sign for the gas pricing, which is a requirement. And so we've asked for, uh, this, uh, sign to have a five-foot waiver to your code, which goes from a fifteen, uh, twenty-foot setback to a fifteen-foot setback. Um, and this is the right-of-way dedication area, which is also including a turn, a decel or acceleration lane. Um, um, I'm, I'm sorry, a deceleration lane going into the, uh, Wawa. So. The Wawa elevations, uh, we've worked with the staff and the architect on this. Uh, it includes, um, uh, the entry feature that you see there, uh, which is fronting Military Trail and the pump island. Um, this will have a aluminum, um, uh, trellis structure that will be the, uh, accent item going over the windows to provide shade uh, in that area. It has an accent of tapered stone that is also at the base of the building, but also on the columns. Um, and then of course, uh, uh, it's pastel colors. This is the elevation looking at Forty-Fifth Street with the outdoor dining area right at, near the entry door and in that area underneath the, uh, trellis, um, location. Uh, the rear elevation is facing into the develop, into the commercial area. There is a screened, uh, median that will screen this, uh, landscape-wise. Um, and, uh, this will also be the service area and loading and unloading area for the, uh, for the site. And this is the right corner elevation, uh, that is facing out to the in, internal driveway access area coming in. We also created design guidelines, um, for this project, which are a part of the approval tonight. You all have those. Uh, the design guidelines is, is to really make this a cohesive development, uh, to work with architectural styles. It also is to, um, narrow down the permitted uses that, uh, we're looking for right now. Uh, we could come back, but we still have to go through the planning commission, this commission, as well as the city council. If we were going to modify any of those uses, um, the building setbacks and heights are set in this design guideline. We have other property development regulations and landscape features. Um, it also provides for internal connections of both access, roadways, um, driveways, pedestrian connections, parking and landscape lighting that will be coordinated. And of course, as I said, um, architectural design, including materials and signage. Um, so those, those are, we're in your packages and we're actually asking for that to be a part of this development. Uh, these are the proposed waivers. I'll go over them very briefly. Um, the, uh, access, as we said, we are, we are lessening the number of driveways actually that go into the property now. And we're asking for, um, two access points on Forty-Fifth Street. Your code o- only allows for two if you're under three hundred parking spaces. We're estimating right now about two hundred ninety-one. We could be three hundred or over depending on who comes in here and develops. We don't know. But, uh, we are reducing the number of access points on Forty-Fifth Street. Um, and so we've asked for this waiver and staff will, um, opine on the waiver, uh, in a minute. I'll let them, uh, make their comments. We talked about the gas station, the gas price sign. It's essential to a directional sign for service stations. It's a requirement, actually. The code requires twenty foot. We're asking for a fifteen foot. Um, it doesn't impact either roadway and it provides us the ability to provide the public with that sign and its visibility, uh, to both locations on the Forty-Fifth Street and to, um, Military Trail. Um, so we're, we're asking for that waiver. Um, we had a, we had, up, up until, uh, yesterday, we have been working with staff on one condition. We agree with all the conditions. And I'm going to make a comment that we are going to agree with the conditions as amended by your staff tonight. Um, we had six additional parking stalls that were on the north side of the proposed Wawa convenience store building. Um, the staff has asked us to angle those to forty-five degrees to allow vehicles to pull in and out. Um, we did auto turn analysis, we did, and, and provide auto turn analysis for that. Our tenant, Wawa, was, uh, really wanted them to be ninety degrees. Um, we feel that a- after, if you look at the overall right now square footage of this project, it's about fifty thousand six hundred plus square feet, which is about this, the entire project will be about the size of a Publix store, um, which we all go to Publix. So that kind of gives you a reference. We didn't feel that, um, that the, the need to change it was really drastic. Um, uh, we also did a traffic evaluation and I'm going to let our engineers, I don't know who's here from our engineering group. Um, um, is, uh, Kyle or?
George, it's Rob Runabom from Simmons and White.
Wow, we have Rob. Rob, well, I'm going to go ahead and, and work the presentation and you can go ahead and talk about it. And then I will, I'm going to go to the next slide. Uh, these are the parking stalls, uh, that we're talking about. And Rob, I'll let you take it from here. And then when you want me to change over to the next slide, I'd be glad to.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. I'm Rob Runabom from Simmons and White Engineers. We're both the traffic engineers and the civil engineers for the project. And like George said, there was only one condition of approval. And as you all know, Wawa is a national tenant and they have their very strict design criteria. And they asked us to work with city staff to do everything we could to maintain their standards and have these as ninety-degree parking spaces. The condition that George had on the screen previously is that it was requested that we modify those to forty-five degree angled parking spaces. So fortunately, we worked with city staff. George, if you want to go to the next screen.
Sure will.
Um, and let's go to the next one.
Okay. I'll go through that. You.
Yep.
There.
This is what we.
These are the six stalls.
The, the city traffic representatives expressed concern about ninety-degree parking backing up on this drive aisle. Um, my staff and I provided traffic volume estimates daily and peak hour. And the volumes are very low. There's less than six hundred trips per day estimated on this drive aisle. And in the peak hour, it was maybe thirty in the peak hour. One every two minutes in one peak hour and one every minute and a half in the other peak hour between the AM and PM. But the city traffic staff still expressed concern and asked us to come up with a solution that would calm this area and bring attention to it. And what we've come up with on this screen is what's called a traffic speed table. It's not a speed bump or a speed hump. It's a table. And this is a very common design element that comes up three or four inches over six feet. And the way the site plan is, we have a landscape island to the east and a landscape island to the west. And the ramp coming up three or four inches is only six feet long. So it fit perfectly in the landscape island frontage. The pedestrian crossing from north to south across the drive aisle would now be raised on the speed table, which is another very accepted traffic calming and safety enhancement. And by the time we were done with coordinating with traffic staff, we all agreed that this is a great mitigation to allow the ninety-degree parking.
We also agreed to put in a, uh, another stop bar and stop sign to make this, uh, a little bit safer intersection for the cars coming off Forty-Fifth Street, um, which is a right turn in only and right turn out.
So I, I think in summary, we have worked with traffic staff. We have come to what I believe is an agreement. And any of the minor details can be handled between now and city commission. But I think this is essentially what will be shown to the commission as a mitigating, um, acceptable mitigation to allow those ninety-degree spaces and make Wawa happy with their national standards.
Very good. And that's it. Uh, that's, uh, our presentation. We think that this is a, going to be a very, very good project to upgrade the area, provide, uh, uh, eventually commercial and services, restaurants, uh, and other commercial retail uses, uh, that will enhance the area as well as, uh, the users of the Fit Team Stadium. Um, uh, and, uh, we would, uh, answer any questions that you might have.
All right, thank you. Any questions of the applicant? John, go ahead.
Sure. And you can leave this screen up because I want to talk about this a little bit, but I have several questions. Um, from what I understand, the plan is for this to just be a, a, to not be a subdivision, but for these to be leased pads. Is that correct?
That's correct. And it's an overall plan development. The owner will own all the, the entire property.
With the first phase, is it intended that this roadway network that's been laid out, not just for the Wawa, but extending west? Is the plan for all of that to be installed with the first phase with the Wawa?
Yes.
Okay. And I also presume that the landscaping is also going to be installed along the entire frontages for both of the major streets with the Wawa development. Is that correct?
Yes. Uh, we're going to be putting in the entire buffer areas all around the property. Um, we think that's a good move to have that mature as, uh, development happens down the road. When people come in and hopefully, uh, uh, lease spaces and we build just like we're going to build for Wawa. And then the entire landscape plan for Wawa's will go in. That's a part of your application that you have tonight. So.
Sure. Well, I think that's important. I think that the idea of turning all the landscape maturing at the same time along the perimeter is important. And it's also important for the community to have that beautification of the site. I mean, I think it's the exciting redevelopment opportunity for a very bladed corner with a notorious history. My family since nineteen seventy-seven. So I mean, I've known of other businesses that have been here. Um, it's a huge improvement and Wawa is a corporate tenant. Um, brings a very fine architectural design. fine architectural design and site amenities and site planning and maintenance. I, you know, they've done a lot of good redevelopment projects throughout Palm Beach County. I wanted to ask you, I noticed, uh, I, I did look at the site. Um, I wanted to ask what was happening with the billboard that's on the site?
Uh, I'm sorry. I didn't get, I didn't get you, I didn't hear you very well on that. What was your, what were your question?
This question's concerned the billboard on the site?
Um, Alan?
Yes.
Do you want to answer anything on the billboard?
Um, the, the plan is, uh, that the, uh, depending on when the lease expires for the billboard, that the billboard, uh, would go. And, uh, while I'm talking about the billboard, um, uh, just to show the, the property owner's commitment to making things better, the, as George described, the cell tower lease, um, it, it's, it's virtually forever. It's like into, uh, uh, twenty-eighty or some bizarre number like that and they paid their rent in advance. But we were able to, uh, able to negotiate a smaller cell tower site, uh, rearrange their, uh, access to make it more compatible with the development. And so, uh, I, I guess my point is this, this developer is, uh, committed to, uh, make this really a quality development. It's a longtime local family that owns it and the, uh, the billboard will go as soon as, uh, uh, we can legally make it go.
So your plan also is to, you're going to prep all of the pads with the first phase so that when we drive by, what we're going to see is a Wawa, a cell tower, a billboard, and a bunch of grass lots. Is that correct?
That, that will be approximately, that will be what you'll see. Yes.
Okay. And I guess the last thing I want to ask is that I noticed that there was an overhead service line for that old gas station crossing Forty-Fifth. Um, is the plan to, uh, do a directional board or take service elsewhere? I think it would be great if we could get rid of that unnecessary, uh, overhead line over a major road. Um, I don't know if you've taken a look at that, but it seems like there's a single service just for the circle K on the corner that's coming across the street.
Uh, I, I have to be honest with you. We did not. I don't think we looked at that. Rob, do you have any comment on that?
No, I, I don't, George.
Okay.
Let me make one comment about that. I, I was not aware of that either, but I know as part of the, uh, the cell tower, uh, service, uh, electrical and, uh, cables and everything else, uh, the, with the developer, the property owner was very insistent upon, uh, all of those being underground.
Yes.
And so I expect anything that can be relocated, uh, will be to enhance the, uh, attractiveness of the, uh, property. So, uh, this is a, again, a property owner that's committed to do a quality development here and doesn't have to be asked twice. Actually, it doesn't even have to be asked once. So, um, you know, uh, if we can, we will.
Okay.
If they can, it will.
And I just have one final question. If we can go back to the slide where you're talking about the parking spaces?
The six spaces?
Yes.
Okay. Let me do this. It'll be quicker.
I do understand where the engineering folks are coming from, certainly with the uncertainty of what's going to happen with these other pads. Obviously, this is the main entrance coming in off of Military for east-west and the idea of people backing out is a concern. I'm not as concerned about six spaces, but I would be really concerned if you were putting ninety-degree parking on the other side with development of that pad. So I think it's important for us to go on record that if we, um, agree to this sort of, uh, proposal here, that, that we would not be looking favorably on having parking on the north side back up into that drive, um, just because it's a major point of access for the paths to the west.
Yeah. Mr. Hicksonbaum, just so you know, we did do a conceptual master plan and it's for, we don't know who the tenant will be, but that area adjacent to that walk will be another pedestrian walk going into that site. It's actually staged as a fast food and we'll have the drive aisle, um, on that side. So.
Okay.
Yeah, it's.
Again.
I think, I think that that's not a problem and we certainly, it'll be on the record that you indicated that and we'll, we'll definitely let the client know. And right now, we do not have parking proposed on that side.
I didn't want for you to take any of my questions as being anything negative about your project. I think it's a beautiful redevelopment project and it's an exciting opportunity for the city. And I'm, I, I think it's welcome for the neighborhood. People who live in that area are going to be so glad to see something happen here. And so it's a great opportunity for the city to seize at this point. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Any other questions of the applicant? Todd, go ahead, please.
One quick question. Um, it's hard to tell in the site plan that's in our staff report when I zoom in on it, it gets kind of blurry. Uh, the three turn lanes that need to be constructed or modified in the traffic letter from the county, is that all incorporated into your entry design in the site plan?
Yes, it is. The site plan reflects the turn lanes.
Yep. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions of the applicant? And if not, if we could hear from staff.
Hey, um, I'm going to share my screen.
Let me get off, Linda.
Okay.
If I can. Oh, yeah. I gotta shut this off first. Sorry. Maybe.
I think I can, I think I can just share. Can everyone see my screen?
Yes, we can.
There you go.
Okay, great. You're welcome. Okay, let me start this present. So, good evening, Linda Louis, Senior Planner for the record. I don't have much to add. Um, George did a fantastic job with summarizing the overall project. Um, the project did receive traffic concurrency approval from Palm Beach County. There are some conditions and, um, to ensure that these conditions have been met, staff has adopted the, this letter, the TPS letter by reference into the conditions of approval. With regards to the public notice requirements, uh, signs were posted on the property. Mailers were sent to all property owners within five hundred feet of the subject property and an ad was placed in the Palm Beach Post. And to date, staff has not received any objections, um, to this proposed project. Uh, staff is recommending approval of planning board case number eighteen-thirteen F with conditions as staff has found that the application complies with the rezoning standards as well as the site design qualitative development standards of our zoning code. Um, the conditions of approval are listed in page two of the staff report. And as noted by the applicant, there is one modifications to the conditions of approval. Um, the project traffic engineer, as well as the city traffic engineer, has come to consensus with regards to, um, modifying the original condition number one in the staff report. So it was agreed upon by the engineers that, um, this new condition here highlighted in yellow, the developer shall mitigate safety and operational concerns due to the location of the parking stalls located along the north side of the proposed Wawa convenience store building as they are abutting the travel lanes of the internal circulation road. Mitigation shall entail installation of patterned speed table and corresponding signage conforming to Palm Beach County standards and extending between each end of the north side parking stalls. The amended site plan shall be submitted, reviewed, and approved by the city's traffic engineer prior to the scheduling, prior to scheduling the application for city commission. And again, this was discussed with the applicant prior to tonight's meeting. And as the applicant has mentioned, they are, um, in agreement with this condition. Um, so these are the rest of the conditions which are highlighted in staff's report, which the applicant had mentioned that, um, they are okay with. And that concludes staff's presentation.
All right. Thank you so much. Any questions of staff? Peter, go ahead, please.
Uh, Linda, I had a question regarding, uh, this infamous speed table. Are there any concerns that southbound traffic on Military Trail are going to use this as a shortcut to get to Forty-Fifth West?
Um, Peter, I do have the city's traffic engineer that's present today, so I'm going to let him answer that question for you.
Confirm that the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be truthful.
Sure I do. Okay, uh, yes, uh, the cut through would definitely be a concern, but with the implementation of the speed cable and the stop controls along the route, we believe there should be sufficient, I would say, delay or, I would say slowdowns to kind of discourage such behavior. And in general, right turn lanes are not as complicated as left turn lanes. So there should not be, I believe in that intersection, there are probably a provision for a right turn on red.
Okay, that addressed your question?
Yep.
All right. Thank you so much. Any other questions of staff? And if not, uh, John Roach, have we anyone from the public who wish to be heard on this application?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I don't see anyone interested in public comment. No.
All right. Then we'll bring it back to the board. Um, anyone have any comments or thoughts before we look for a motion? Does anyone have a concern about this project? And if there seems to be general support, I'll look for a, a motion. And look and look.
All right. Uh, I will approve of, uh, of case number eighteen-thirteen F, uh, inclusive of the eight conditions with a revised condition number one and two waivers.
Okay, we have a motion. Have we a second?
Excellent.
Yeah, we have a motion. We have a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those a favorite signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. That then brings us to code revision cases, of which there are none. Other business, unfinished business, new business?
Mr. Chair, if I may, um, if we can ask Angela to finish her presentation. It should take a few seconds, but, uh, she's, she's prepared to complete that.
Thank you.
Hopefully the internet will not go down this time. It's the city's internet.
Now, I think, I think you're hitting the button myself, Angela. It's just my theory.
You know what? I'd do it next month. When I logged off to sign back on, I didn't remember my presentation back up, so it's not going to work. So I'll do it next. I'll do it in the New Year. It was basically, as you saw, it was, uh, one Clear Lake, which was a major amendment for the add a sign package. And it was Kaiser, which was commissioned approved last night. And that was the football field and the blitzers that you guys heard, um, in October with the mediation. So the commission did approve both of those cases last night by a five-to-zero vote.
We also, we also had the second reading of the zoning code amendment to provide government buildings an additional six months on top of the eighteen months for a non-conforming structure. That was the deal. That was part of the county, city, inter-local agreement. That got approved last night as well.
Okay. Is there anything else? And if not, um, Mr. Thomas, before you leave, I have one quick question for you, but otherwise we'll stay on adjourned. Thank you so much. And, and Sam, is there a way I could call you or you could call?